Hey, good evening. We've called order meeting number eighteen fifty-three of the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. We are here live in the John Daly Room at the Town Hall as well as on the Zoom platform. We have a core. We have four regular members. Plus one alternate. So Frank, I'm going to ask you to sit in this evening on any discussion involving.
Yes, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Do we have any edited items? Not. Legal notice. We had three legal notices. First legal notice is that the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three at six thirty. Details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda and will be made available on the town's website. It's PZ two thousand and twenty-three dash seventeen. The applicant owner is Carmel Realty LLC. Frank Giordano was requesting a text amendment. The zoning regulation section five oh two, use table B one, B two, M one, H I Z, and T Z five zoning. Next one is PZ two thousand and twenty-three dash eighteen. The applicant owner is the town of East Windsor is requesting a text amendment to zoning regulation section four oh five on temporary events. Full copy of these of the application is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage. On the town's website, all interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comments regarding this application. This appeared in the Journal Inquirer on June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three and June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Additional legal notice we have is the East Windsor zoning, East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold the following public hearing on Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three at six thirty. Details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda will be made available on the town's website. Easy two thousand and twenty-three dash nineteen, especially use permit site plan review application. As the applicant is Ramsdale and Sons LLC wishing to convert a residential house into a professional office, including parking lot improvements at one twenty-four South Main Street. Map forty-two, block five, lot fifty-nine B, zone T Z five. Full copy of the application is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage of the town's website. All interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comments regarding these applications. This also. This also appeared in the Journal Inquirer on June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three and June twenty-three, twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Public participation. This is the public participation portion of our meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Is there anyone online that would like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Approval of minutes, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Regular meeting. Eighteen fifty-two. Anyone have any alterations, corrections?
I have question.
Yeah.
On. Page four, line one seventy. It says discussion. Commissioner noted for staff inspection occurred on May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Should that say? Somebody's name? Or?
Line one seventy.
Or I guess it could say it was noted. And then it will fix it. But it's not clear to me what that. Is saying.
Do not have a note of anyone specifically saying that in my notes?
It could have been.
Sounded like a staff comment, I think.
The lines of bullets is prepared by.
Yeah. Oh, so that was a correction to the date. Was that the? I do recall there was some discussion on exactly when that occurred. And I believe Ruth Ann made the correction that that was the date that the staff inspection occurred.
And then she made her report before.
So we could just say the staff inspection occurred and strike commissioner blank noted.
To the or? You want to replace commissioner with staff?
Okay, that works too.
We will replace the word commissioner with staff.
And it's just infused by it.
Have that pegged line one seventy. We're going to replace the word commissioner with staff. Any one else have any other comments? Okay, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting eighteen fifty-two held June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three with on line one seventy, the word commissioner replaced by the word staff.
There was a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Abstain, I was absent.
Okay. Mike, Jim, Ian, and Dave approved Frank's thing. Have no new applications to receive. No performance bonds review. No continuing public hearings. So moving on to new public hearings. Um, I would make a recommendation that we take these out of order. I'd like to see us here nineteen first and then seventeen and eighteen. Does the commission agree?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, then I'll. And I have a motion to modify the order of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to modify the order of the new public hearings under section ten such that PZ two thousand and twenty-three dash nineteen moves above A and B.
There's a motion to modify the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, so the first public hearing we're going to hear is PZ two thousand and twenty-three dash nineteen for one twenty-four South Main Street, a special use permit. Uh, site plan and review proposed to convert a residential house into an office, including parking lot improvements. The applicant is Ramsdale and Sons LLC. Who's here to speak on that?
Good evening. Kim Kuhn with J R Russo and Associates here tonight with Ed Ramsdale, um, representing the applicant. The subject property is one twenty-four South Main Street, which is a approximate three-quarter acre watt on the west side of Route five in the T Z five zone. It is abutted to the south and west by the Flower Power Nursery. Um, to the north by vacant land that was previously approved for landscape and supply, a landscape, supply and garden center. Uh, and east by Route five and across Route five by a mix of commercial and residential uses. The site is currently occupied by a vacant house. And what the applicant is proposing to do is convert that existing house for use as an office for security business. Um, this will include essentially improvements to pave the parking lot. Um, to provide the required number of spaces and required width of the aisle. Um, as well as the installation of a new infiltration basin. Um, which if you look at the exhibit over there is in the, in the southwest corner to capture the runoff from the parking lot and ensure that by means of groundwater recharge and infiltration, that there's no increase in peak discharge off of the property as a result of the additional parking and paving. Um, based on the square footage of the building and the zoning requirements, nineteen spaces are required. However, uh, the applicant only anticipates a maximum of six employees. Therefore, we are requesting a reduction in the number of parking in accordance with section, um, I believe it's six oh one point four B, which allows the deferral of up to thirty-five percent of the parking. Therefore, we are proposing to install thirteen spaces and proposing to defer the remaining six spaces. However, on our site plan, we do show locations where those six spaces can be installed, uh, should they be deemed necessary in the future. Um, that's the majority of the site improvements. However, I would also like to point out that the, um, the entire property boundary currently has an existing fence, which is in pretty rough shape. Um, so Ed does plan on, uh, replacing that fence in its entirety with a six-foot-high solid fence. In addition, there are some dead trees on the property, which he does plan to remove in addition to the ones that along the, uh, at the driveway entrance that'll have to come out in order to widen the driveway. So I just wanted to note that. We have received comments from the town engineer and we have addressed them and believe he submitted a final memo stating that he is, uh, okay with the application. We also received Ruth Ann's memo. Um, she very nicely details how our application can solve the special permit criteria. Um, however, there is a recommended condition of approval to require a landscape, landscape screening to the south and west of our parking lot. And the neighboring use to the south and west is the existing parking lot for the Flower Power Nursery, which is a commercial use in the T Z five zone. And I just question whether the screening of the parking from our commercial use to the Flower Power's commercial use is a requirement. Um, she does reference a section of the zoning regulations, which is nine hundred point three F three A. Um, but that section deals with administrative procedures. I don't believe in my mind, it doesn't spell out requirements. It more or less is telling you what you should consider when reviewing a site plan, which would be the appropriate screening of a parking lot. In this case, where there is in no other section of the zoning regulations, is there a requirement for screening between commercial parking lots? Then I would say it is appropriate not to have screening. And in all the years that I've been in front of you, I can't remember an application where we've actually been required to screen, provide screening of a parking lot between two commercial properties or two, two industrial properties or even a commercial and industrial property. And, you know, I can provide recent examples with United Ag and Turf. Um, even the park site, site that twelve South Main Street, the dental office at the corner of Wells Road. All of these are commercial where their parking lots, there was no requirement to screen that parking lot from any of the adjacent commercial or industrial uses. So I, I honestly think that that section she's referring to is just your direction of what you need to consider when reviewing a site plan and, and it, I just don't believe it's been interpreted that it is a requirement that, um, screening of the parking area is, is required in that section because if it would be, if it was a requirement, then essentially any parking lot that is constructed in town would require screening based on that. So I guess I'm just looking for clarification on that and it's, it's our opinion that, that, that hopefully should not be a condition of approval. Well, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Hey, we'll start on the end. Frank, do you have any questions?
I'm okay right now.
Dave?
No, sir. I'm good.
Yeah.
I guess I would like to ask Ruth Ann what she thinks about the screening. Have we been remiss in other applications or?
There's a requirement in the site plan review for considerations and it's one that we recently revisited at Reservoir Road. Uh, and so I made sure going through this application that I was following through on the requirements there. What I noted was there was landscaping being removed, paving time in and no landscaping being proposed. And so as I looked at that requirement for screening, we thought, okay, we have a couple of spots. Few parking spaces, not the parking that's up against the building, but the park that's you have the open area that it could be landscaped, screened in some way. I could, should we be intentional? So where I was asking for was all of these four spaces here.
And this is something we've been challenged on recently, right? So as past practice was wrong, we wouldn't continue to.
And it, it's a consideration, like a reasonableness consideration and fairness. So if you have a consideration, then.
Yeah. Is there, if I just chime in on it?
Sure. So I'm at Ramstone. I just want to point out, uh, existing conditions. So there, there's a, in the front towards Route five, there's a six-foot fence and a bulk and around the property, it's about four foot, but as Tim stated, it's in rough shape. It's got, the whole thing's got to come down. So I'm going to replace it all with six foot anyway. Um, so this is between Flower Power and our property here. In the back of the property, it's just a old tobacco barn. It's half down anyway. And it's really, this is Flower Power back here as well. But there's really no, there's nothing really going on back there. But anyway, um, I just want to make you aware, there'll be a new fence. It will be, you know, as tall as I am. This is a parking lot over here and there's just really nothing on the back there anymore. Just so you know, the existing conditions. The Flower Power has the sheds all lined up anyway on their side. The property, there's already not that it's permanent, but it's already some blockage, if you will, screening. These are the product.
Satisfied your question, man? Jim? And, um, I guess I'll just give my opinion on this. This section is like Ruth Ann said, things that we need to look at and consider. Um, my opinion is it probably needs higher consideration when we're screening between a commercial or recreational use and a residential area. Commercial, the commercial, um, by providing a fence, I, I would consider that as screening also. That's my personal.
I just wanted to understand.
I agree. Anyone else? Anything else they want to ask for?
Well, I'm okay with the parking lot. We talked to him clearly. You're taking a building that's kind of vacant. Make it an event itself.
Nice one. Yeah. We, it's an older building, so the rooms are big. I mean, so the square footage calculation doesn't really pan out on an older building. This and even on the six that normally occupy, really only four are there regularly, daily tour, month, field. And never have to find shelves. It's strictly uh, all back office functions. It's just all administrative. That's it.
Alright, so this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Anyone online that would like to comment on this application? Okay, um, if everybody's satisfied with this, uh, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on application PZ two thousand and twenty-three dash nineteen.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other further discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. We, uh, have all the information we need to vote.
Yeah.
So it looks like and under conditions to be met. Or be under one strike. Okay. Oh, we have, we have, yes, we have amendments for the, uh, waiver on the reduction of parking spaces.
I'll make a motion to grant a waiver per section six oh one point four B to PZ two thousand and twenty-three dash nineteen for one twenty-four South Main Street to reduce the number of parking spaces to be immediately installed by thirty-five percent or six spaces. The spaces shall be held in reserve as shown on the site plan should the intensity or change in use require increased parking.
You have a motion to, uh, waiver the parking requirements. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Dave? Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Waiver was granted. Okay. Propose a motion for the application?
I'll make a motion to approve PZ two thousand and twenty-three dash nineteen for a specially used permit with site plan for the conversion of a residential house to professional office, including parking lot improvements. The owner applicant is Ramsdale, Ramsdale and Sons LLC located at one twenty-four South Main Street. Map forty-two, block five, lot fifty-nine B. This approval is granted, subject to conformance with reference plans as may be modified by the commission and this approval. And the following conditions and modifications. First reference plans are Ramsdale and Sons LLC, one twenty-four South Main Street, East Windsor, Connecticut, oh six oh eight eight. Map forty-two block five, lot fifty-nine B, zone T Z five by J R Russo and Associates LLC. Sheets one through four dated six nine twenty-three. There's a number of conditions um, that must be met prior to signing off on the mylar's that are in, um, Ruth Ann's memo to the commission dated six twenty-two, twenty-three. And we would include conditions one through four A, striking four B. Then go on to conditions which must be met prior to the issuance of any permits. And that would be conditions five and six in her memo. Next, there would be conditions which must be met prior to issuance of the certificate of zoning compliance. And that would be condition seven and eight in her memo. And lastly, there are general conditions nine, ten, eleven, and twelve in the memo. All of which are included in this motion.
Hey, we have a motion to approve the special use permit. Do we have a second?
Second.
Dave? Further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. You are approved. Next, we're going here. Easy two thousand and twenty-three dash seventeen, a text amendment proposed, a text change to zoning regulation section five oh eighteen permitted accessory use, use table B one, B two, M one, H I Z, and T Z five. The applicant is Carmel Realty LLC, Frank Giordano. Who's here to speak on?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Um, it's a pleasure being back before you all this evening. Thank you for having us tonight. For the record, my name is Daniel Glisman. I'm an attorney with McDermott Reynolds and Glisman, and I'm here on behalf of my client Carmel Realty LLC, uh, and its principal Frank Giordano, uh, who is with me this evening. As the commission's aware, uh, we have filed a text amendment to request a change to the zoning regulations to specifically define, um, the self-storage facility use and permit that use by special permit. Uh, we've also provided a list of additional development and design criteria to, uh, ensure that these projects are developed tastefully, uh, and in keeping with the town's, um, design standards, uh, and with uh, significant oversight as required per the special permit process. Um, we've worked with staff, uh, as noted in the staff report on several iterations of these proposed additional design and development criteria. Um, and we believe that this, that our proposed text amendment, um, improves, uh, the town zoning regulations by more specifically defining this, uh, this specific use, the self-storage facility use, um, by providing its own category and allocating exactly where they can go and again, requiring oversight on the approval of those projects by special permit. Um, and as opposed to its current status, which is, uh, as also noted by staff in their report that, uh, historically these uses have been really defined just under a general warehouse use. So we're proposing to earmark them specifically. Uh, and as I said, provide, uh, specific oversight and standards to put in place for these projects. Um, we also believe that this will provide property owners with, uh, the ability to activate underutilized office space and parcels uh, with this in-demand use category. Um, as we all know, uh, because of COVID and with the, really the revolution of remote work um, and work from home, that office demand in this region and frankly, across the country is significantly in decline. Um, and we believe that this is a suitable use for properties that may be in need of filling spaces, um, and just really better utilizing their, their, uh, existing space or the property. Um, we believe that the language that we have proposed, which, uh, requires, uh, like I said, various standards for these developments, including, um, mandating that these types of developments are, uh, part of a mixed-use development, um, on parcels that have, uh, street access. Um, is, is an appropriate approach for these as opposed to staff's recommendation, which we believe is really a one-size-fits-all, requiring every single one of these projects to be a part of a mixed-use development. Uh, we believe that mandating a mixed-use development across each and every one of these projects, uh, wouldn't fit for some property owners who, like we said, may be, um, losing their office space tenants and may not be able to redevelop that site, um, with a mixed use, uh, with, with a mixed use project. Um, I would, uh, like to invite my client Frank up just to kind of discuss Frank Giordano, as you all may know, a longtime property owner in town. Um, and I was just going to ask you, Frank, to comment on briefly your understanding of the market and what you've seen and sort of demand, and particularly with your, your property that you own in town here.
Sure. Good evening and thank you for your time. Um, I purchased Hartfield Executive Park in two thousand and eight. Um, I purchased Hartfield Executive Park in two thousand eight. And at the time, it was considered a underutilized property. It was at about a sixty percent occupancy. And I felt like being a a single owner to one facility and not a large conglomerate of a a real estate trust that I could give it a hands-on type of a management um approach. And I bought in two thousand eight, which you know was a a very turbulent economic time, and uh took a couple of years to build it up to seventy percent occupancy. Couple more years to build it to eighty, and eventually uh the building did fill up. Um, I believe two thousand sixteen. Um, at the time of the pandemic, I was in occupancy in the high eighties. Um, so I was stabilized, I was secure, and business was running um fairly well. You know, I I compete strongly with uh a building up the street in Enfield, and also the Windsor Market, the Dayhill Road area is, it's a very competitive market. My largest client uh occupied three-quarters of the third floor in November of two thousand nineteen. They asked if the rest of the floor could become available for expansion. And they asked if there was any other space within the building that they could occupy. And I told them that there was a possibility that the second floor tenant was gonna be moving out. So in November of two thousand nineteen, they wanted to take over close to half of the building. The pandemic happened, and six months after the pandemic happened, they asked to reduce by eighty percent. Since the pandemic, they came back to me with this request for reduction one year into a five-year lease. And obviously, I told them that it wasn't financially feasible to let them out of the lease. I had other tenants that had lease expirations, and they moved out for the same exact reason, work from home, remote work. And um I told them that it could be subleased, and subsequently, they just moved out. And their leases uh ends at the end of two thousand twenty-four. They don't care. They're basically saying, chase me, try to get the money from me. I'm in litigation with them. So I'm currently at a twenty percent occupancy from in the high eighties pre-pandemic. And this is not an East Windsor problem. This is a national problem. Commercial office space is discussed at every public address that's done by the Secretary of the Treasury for the United States, talking about how office space has been the backbone of the banking industry. It's a large asset of banks and how are all of these buildings going to be repurposed to be stabilized again? So I'm a single facility owner, and I spent three years trying to find investors to come in for different directions with the building, whether it be medical, whether it be turning it into apartments, whether it be to turn it into self-storage. And I could tell you that I use C B Richard Ellis as a an agent, and they are an international company. They do not have a medical space. Salesperson doesn't exist. So what I've found in three years that is that major medical companies like Hartford Healthcare, like Trinity Health, like uh New Haven, um Yale, they find facilities that they want. They purchase them, they lease them, they drive the ball. Very, very hard to get through their door and convince them to come to you. And they don't do things on speculation. Investors don't build medical space on speculation and then try to rent it out by marketing it. It just doesn't exist. Um, the cost to convert the building into apartments is just financially impossible. Um, there was an article on the front page of the Hartford Current by the largest owner of office space in downtown Hartford that stated that it's financially impossible to convert the space that they have empty into apartments without billions of dollars in grants to convert it, because even if they could raise the money, it wouldn't be financially viable. They would lose money after the conversion. So the reason that I'm requesting this amendment is because the self-storage market is thriving. It's has a four-tenths of one percent failure rate. And it is what will pull in an investor to assist me with the financial situation of the building and give a picture that makes sense to them because they know that bringing in customers for this specific purpose is not difficult. It's it's said at these conventions for self-storage, if you build it, they will come. It just happens. And they stabilized in two or three years, and they never fail. So I know that they're they're not sexy, they're not so appealing to the town as far as being uh something that is more dynamic. But as far as turning the building around and bringing the value back to it, while the value right now is probably fifty percent of the financial obligations, it's the only viable direction that I can move in. And I do have a developer that wants to work with me to do this, and the the reason that they want to do it is because they've done the same due diligence that I've done to know that self-storage is solid, and it's, there's still um opportunity for uh growth in that sector, that it's not maxed out, it's not uh you know, there there's no dilution right now. There's still, all the facilities are stabilized, and they're all uh sitting at occupancies in the ninety, you know, ninety-five percent now after two or three years. So I am requesting this amendment so that I will have the ability to save my building and to continue and to continue to be a part of the East Windsor business community and and hold on to my business.
Thank you, Frank. Um, so folks, as you heard, uh and and Frank is really a perfect case study for the commercial real estate space right now, not only in Connecticut, not only in this region, but across the country. It's a, it's a tough time. It's a tough business. Um, and we really believe that not only will this text amendment provide some additional clarity to the town's regulations, uh but provide hu- uh property owners like Frank with an additional use category uh that they may be able to occupy uh their space with. And uh we believe that it's consistent with the rules and regulations with respect to adopting zoning text amendments in that it's uh consistent with the plan of conservation and development. Uh, and and we urge the commission to approve uh or or uh work with us closely on our proposed zoning text amendment uh as originally proposed uh by our team. So thank you all very much for your time tonight. Happy to take any additional questions that you may have on our proposal. Thank you.
Hey, uh Frank?
I don't have any question right now. Not yet.
Okay.
I don't have questions, but I have comments. The main comments.
Sure.
Um. I feel like we have seen and heard many applications for self-storage recently in places where the regulations allow them. And I am having angst with opening up so much of the town to self-storage uses by changing the regulations to allow it in basically all zones except for residential.
Any questions?
Um, I seem to differ a little bit than you, Anne. Um, I don't want to open up to all the areas in town, but it's better to have an empty building sitting there off the tax roll and and not doing anything to be dormant. Something we gotta do to you know, zoning regulations are here to change and mold and and to move. So you know, when society changes and you know, like you said before, nobody's in the malls, nobody's going to the mall anymore, nobody's everybody's buying on Amazon online. Office spaces slowly dwindling away. So if we don't do something, then we're gonna have an empty building sitting there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may also add, I would just like to point out that we have proposed significant design and development requirements that don't make this a you can go anywhere in town. There's uh size requirements for the parcel depending on which zoning district it's in. There's very specific and detailed um use requirements in terms of its location and proximity to other uses, as well as, you know, how these facilities can be designed uh if they're going into office buildings to ensure the aesthetics remain the same. So it's really not a opening Pandora's box by way of allowing any and anyone to come in and and take advantage of uh the self-storage facility zoning. In fact, we believe that it it really provides more constraints than currently exist because you're not operating under the warehouse zoning use, which is more general in nature. You're now specifically defining this use category and providing uh several design development criterias to ensure that these projects are are done tastefully and in keeping with the community standards that that you folks will will set forth in the special use permit process.
Do you have, I do have a question in the line of what you're saying here. So you're currently located in a B one, correct?
Uh, yes, Frank does own a property in a B one district.
You're proposing changes to B one, B two, H I Z, T Z five, uh M one. Why all these zones?
You know, we believe that the uh, you know, a- as in terms of good policy for uh planning and development purposes, uh we wanted to broaden the scope of the zoning district and you know, really sort of mirror similarly to the warehouse zoning districts and and other similar uses that are allowed in several zoning districts. So we don't want to specifically prohibit it by limiting just the zoning districts and instead be more targeted to the way that the development is proposed and what it ultimately looks like. And so, you know, our approach was to um be more limited in the design and and the review criteria to sort of tighten up the zoning restrictions as opposed to specifically allocating only one or two zoning districts. And you know, we just want to have a broader brush stroke, generally speaking, on the zoning districts, but be more specific as to the use and the design and the way that the facility functions.
Well, that's specifically when we, you know, consider a a text amendment change, we don't look at your project. We look at the entire town and any other part that in town that could be affected by this. So with it being such a broad change to five, six different zones, personally, I'd need, I'd need to see more, you know, h- how this would affect other possible properties. Uh, take a look at, you know, how many other you you put a two-acre restriction on on your proposal here. So I'm sure there's a lot of two-acre properties in town that would meet this. Um, personally, one thing I would like to see addressed in this would be proximity to residential area. So restrictions on a budding to residential area would be something that I would want to see something, or at least a way to address that if it's anywhere close to a residential area, maybe some additional restrictions on hours or or uh lighting, or you know, there's things that have to be considered if they're close to a residential area. So by opening it up to so many zones, we have to take a much deeper look at how many other possible properties there are that could be affected by this text amendment change.
If I may address the the commission, um through this process, I looked through um all of the large self-storage facilities that are up and down uh ninety-five and ninety-one, and looked at the towns that they're in, and looked at the zones that they're under. And if you get down to Stamplet or Greenwich, Norwich, all of these towns that you drive by, if you're driving down to the city, you see many of these facilities, and they are dropped into cities. They are right next to office buildings. They are right next to uh apartment buildings because it complements it. They are right off of the highway, and they're in somewhat of a mixed-use zone, but independent on that property. Whereas in this case, and I would encourage you to to look at the the zoning in some of the other towns around, and I know this is about East Windsor, but some of the other towns around the state, whereas this was dropped into an industrial zone, which is really, like I said the last time I was in front of the panel, it's shipping and distribution oriented. And this is a consumer-based storage. It's not an industrial type of a storage, and it's dropped in an industrial type of a zone. It's not an industrial use. It's a business and a consumer use. So it makes more sense for them to be near consumers, whether they're in an apartment that doesn't have enough space, so they get a self-storage unit to have their overflow, whether somebody has their seasonal goods there, whether an office needs to have uh additional space because they can't store their records or whatever those things are. These facilities tend to be around every other type of thing, whether it be restaurants, apartments, office buildings, whatever they are. In East Windsor, you know, it's just, this is a smaller demographic. It's a smaller town. So you know, as the panel says, it's an important uh building. It's an important site from the the highway, but these are where these facilities tend to be built.
And and also, if I might just read right from the draft text amendment, um, the seventh bullet point in terms of our proposed uh restrictions and and requirements, um, we require that in the case of a property not located within within the M one zone, so all of these other zoning districts, and where the building is visible from from a public street, the overall buildings uh and site design shall emulate the appearance, the appearance of office or residential-style buildings and convey an appearance of quality through the use of architectural features such as surfaces, materials, and finishes, and no building facade shall be finished exclusively with corrugated or sheet metal siding. Um, and so we really feel that you know, that's gonna tremendously uh impact the way that these these projects can move forward. Um, also, as you may have seen, the uh council of uh regional governments did comment on this, um, and they stated that um there were no apparent conflict with regional plans and policies or the concerns of neighboring towns. Uh, they also commented on uh based on the existing uses allowed in the B one district specifically that allowing this sort of stagnant use uh may not fit the B one zone. I think we, you you just heard from Frank, who's done a lot of research on these self-storage facilities. We don't believe that they're really a stagnant use. This isn't a a um industrial use where you're gonna have trucks pulling up and flatbeds pulling up to store project products. This is a really a retail sort of consumer-faced use, so we don't, we don't really believe that it's um a stagnant use per se. Uh, and and staff also has reviewed the project uh in significant detail, and and their comment, as I understand it, and and I don't mean to put any any words in their mouth, but based on their their uh materials submitted, their comment was really just to ensure that these uses um include, are included within um multi-use development projects. And and again, this is something that we have included in our uh proposal, just with the caveat that that requirement be only uh included on projects that have frontage on a public street. Um, so you know, all of these components will activate or act to really limit the number of properties that can be activated for this particular use.
That's my my next comment was gonna be about what Craig had to say. But um my interpretation of that was what they, how I read that is that kind of along the lines of what you said, four-tenths of one percent of these fail. So usually, once they're there, they're there forever. And I think that's how they interpret that as a stagnant use, that once this development goes in, it's not gonna change. It's gonna stay a self-storage in in perpetuity. That's not gonna be developed into anything different. So as the HI being close to an H I Z zone, if there is further development in that area, that's probably something that's gonna come off the development rolls because they won't fail. They can continue to stay as they are.
And and I think that's a fair point, e- except for the fact that, again, as Frank mentioned, these are these are often included in in mixed-use developments, and we don't necessarily believe that the development of a self-storage facility would preclude any future development. In fact, it may have the opposite effect of stabilizing a particular property, which would then, you know, allow for additional investment on an as-needed and as-available basis. And so we certainly don't think that just having this one use is gonna prohibit it from uh prohibit any particular property from being developed into, say, additional office or even residential, uh depending on the layout and the availability of the parcel uh at some point in the future. It's just that you know, specifically requiring that all parcels include multi-use developments may not fit every project and and every property. So uh, we certainly think that it's not prohibitive of future development.
I have one more comment. The phrase shall be located on the state highway. Um, East Windsor has state highway that is, I will call it rural roads. They're not all Route five I ninety-one. So what this opens, I think, is much bigger than what you envision.
Yeah, again, we haven't uh, we haven't worked with staff necessarily to review every parcel that you know, may become available, uh, and and we're happy to, you know, work towards improving this proposal um, to the, you know, to to the betterment of the project. And and of course, we want to bring a proposal that's in keeping with the town standards and and something that uh, you folks are comfortable with and you folks in town are comfortable with. Of course, we felt uh, and still feel that the proposal we've put forth is thoughtful uh, and and well, well, well-planned, but um but we're happy to work with staff as we need to on a going-forward basis and you know, and of course, we thank everyone for the feedback and the inputs that we've gotten so far.
I I think if you do the mapping that our chairman suggested, you'll see how much of East Windsor this opens up. Self-storage too. Because I think you are I'm assuming you're thinking of Route five as state highway. You're not thinking of all the backroads of East Windsor that are state highway.
Yeah, understood. I'll have to, we'll have to look into that and and uh, you know, maybe that warrants just a more cleaner uh, you know, depiction of the roadways that these these can abut.
Um, just as additional information for the commission, um, the staff has uh, mentioned several times that they'd like to see the thirty-three acres to the rear of the building developed. And I've had several meetings with the uh, company that owns that property and to be honest, they have no intention of developing it. Um, if they were to develop it, they were going to put apartments there, but um with the the situation right now, they don't feel like it's financially viable to do it with the cost of goods and the economy and the state that it's in. It's not currently for sale, but they are looking to sell it because they just want to move on because of the amount of money that it would take to to make the uh, property able to be developed. In addition to the fact that a slice of that property has state ownership that was already attempted to be um, acquired by that company years ago and failed. So.
What's on the table tonight is a change to the zoning regulation across the whole town. It's not about one parcel.
Absolutely.
The entire town of East.
Hmm, yeah, of course. Thank you for that. We would absolutely agree. This is a text amendment for uh, to the zoning regulations and it's townwide.
Do the chair pass and make the map. Of all the parcels that fit this, you'll see what my concern is.
Understood.
I just think you have to work with staff more closely to get us more information rather than opening this up to everybody or to everything. Perhaps those are not the correct words, but I think if you work with staff, maybe you could work something out where it could be a little more uh, restrictive or prohibitive or uh, whatever to the town. I think right now I I don't know if it meets our plan of conservation development. E- even though that's the intent, it's not our Bible, of course, as you know, of course, but I think we have to look at the intent.
Understood. We absolutely appreciate the feedback uh, and certainly would be amenable to a continuance and uh, we have, we have some time still on this proposal and uh, we'd love the opportunity to work with staff uh, on a going-forward basis for some additional feedback and to, you know, further refine the proposal.
I I like the concept, but I'm not so sure that devil's in the details.
Of course, it always is.
Anna, Mike, do you have any uh, comments or questions you might have?
I guess some of the things um, we've talked about, H I Z zone, not necessarily in keeping with um this use, that the parcel, I know this is uh, specific to parcel, but parcel under consideration for this text change is eligible for H I Z, it is not H I Z, it's B one. Um, but this type of use really is prohibited in that area. Um, the Warehouse Point Study has the area as the gateway to Warehouse Point. Um, so those things give us some concern and certainly the broad stroke of all the zones falling in here, um does warrant that. I I agree with Lawrence.
I feel confident that something can be worked out, but I think there's a lot more work to be done.
The only thing that I would add is that we perhaps backing up to how we, I think, got or remain to the point where there are so many zones included because we have reviewed this over at least seven months. It is that our uh, focus has been that if it's not the M one, it it will be mixed use. And we recognize that to their point, this can facilitate a broader redevelopment of a property. It can be complimentary and accessory to another development. So we did not provide additional comment on restricting the zones because in our mind, it was always going to be part of a a phase development. As we got to closer to the version that's in front of you, some of the caveats for when it will be mixed use, including having frontage or not having frontage were added. So it makes the idea of including all these zones in in our mind less appropriate. Um, because now you're you're further, you're providing additional um, criteria where that mixed-use component isn't there. Um, so I don't think it's necessarily our opinion that this is completely incompatible with everything else. But as other towns can really get done, moving this to complement further redevelopment of the property because it's currently viable. But a couple of years ago, it wasn't, right? We wanted to create some of that synergy because on its own, it doesn't really meets and checks some of those boxes. So that's, I think, how we got to a point where the front of the reg says one thing and then um, which is the two bullet points that are in the memo that you gave.
If I may just elaborate on what Mike said, when when we discussed this in light several meetings that we probably had with staff and with the my professional team, um, we were really keyed in on, you know, what could be done with B one and could the property fall under, it's already netted under the H I Z and that gives the flexibility for, you know, multiple things to be done in the area and it limits some of the constraints of a typical project. And that's really where it was being zeroed into. And I don't know if if it got broadened across every zone out of uh, a need for fairness to 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 put this out there for a tech change, to to put it into a couple of particular zones rather than all of them, but I don't think it was ever the intent to propose this for this building, but have it inflict the entire town's zone.
And and just to supplement to that, I think we agree with everything that uh, Michael said it with the caveat that we don't believe mandating these projects to be a part of um, a a mixed-use development in every case is applicable. Uh, certainly in many cases, it it will end up working out that way, um, but mandating it across the board, uh, we believe could could make it difficult for some property owners to be able to have the ability to uh, revitalize their their properties.
Well, you can say we can't be psychosocial, we have to
Of course, yeah, of course, of course.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? And so this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Good presentation.
Thank you.
Is there anyone online that would like to comment on this application? Okay, so I guess to kind of summarize the notes that I took here, I think some of the things we need to take a look at is the state, the wording on the state road requirement, see how that applies. If we, that is necessary to have as many zones included in this or do you want to narrow that down as to what the zones would be also affected by this? And uh, and I, again, I, this may be mine personally, but I'd like to see some kind of language to protect, protect the residential areas.
Absolutely.
Yeah, does that cover mostly what we're, anyone else have anything else that needs to be addressed? All right, so I think at this point, it's appropriate to continue this public hearing. So I entertain a motion to continue the public hearing. Uh, is it adequate enough time before our our next meeting or do you need a little more time than that?
I think we should be fine.
Yeah, I think the next weekend, next weekend, the next meeting uh, gives us adequate opportunity to work with staff.
July eleventh is our next. Okay.
Thank you, Anna.
So I have a motion to continue the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on application P Z twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, a text amendment on the application pertaining to self-storage facilities until our next meeting, which is July eleven.
Motion, there's a motion to continue the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, ready, Dave. Any further discussion? There are no more call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Our next public hearing is for P Z twenty twenty-three dash eighteen. It's the town of East Windsor text amendment, text change to zoning regulation section four oh five temporary events. The application is the town of East Windsor.
I can speak to this, um. This is a follow-on effort. If you remember Danielle, who drove, came in and showed you her new application for temporary events. Um, and so we're going through our regulations. We had limited information on what was required for temporary events. Some pieces scattered throughout the regulations. And so this draft is really meant to uh, put more information on how to go about getting a temporary event permit, the different groups that need to do reviewing and setting some time constraints. Uh, really needing that two weeks to allow for the health department and the police department fire, the, there's a, the building department all weighing in on um, planned events. So it's written up, we've added, where we had four times a year, we did move it to six. Um, and then a size component to it. So that if there's a temporary event with less than a hundred people, it could be permitted for six times per calendar year, uh, with a temporary event permit provided all the departments have signed on. And then if it's a, an event with more than a hundred people, carnival, festival, festival, multi-day events, um, it's could be allowed two times per calendar year for the temporary event permit provided um all those necessary approvals. At that mercy.
Those are just listed as examples, strictly it's
Yes.
number of people. So anything, any kind of event over a hundred people would trigger this to maximum. So see.
Yeah, so temporary event has been defined with the new definition in the reg and some that's backside of the page there. A short-term public outdoor activity on private property that is outside customary activities associated with the property. Events may include, but are not limited to carnivals, fundraisers, flea markets, art fairs, seasonal outdoor sales, promotional or community events, grand openings, etc.
Okay. Yeah, the word specifically outdoor, because this also applied to indoor events.
Sounds good.
But draft.
Yeah, that's it. You know, we could um restrict the word.
Strict or outdoor, so any event, it's indoor, outdoor, still limited.
Okay. I think she was probably thinking about like um, the German.
Yeah.
But if it's customary, you know, it is. Using all that. We don't necessarily do this. So some things I'd like to point out. The title on here says temporary events to be replaced entirely. But it really is four oh five A, that I have sent out um, a version of this.
Yeah, only one.
Yeah.
That's your one, right?
So this is the existing regulations. Um, but we don't want to get rid of the temporary use of trailers should someone need it, if they have a house fire or whatnot, so that I think that was unintentional. Um, so I would say ten, four oh five A is going to be, yeah.
Striking to be, which is the.
May I ask, what precipitated all this change?
Um.
The reg were terrible.
The regs were terrible. Yes, we remember a while back, I came in with a spreadsheet of all the places we talked about events. And then people coming in last minute, last minute wanting, I'm having an event tomorrow, uh, and it just get hard, it really hard to do. And so, you know, we work with our colleagues in the health department, fire department, the police department, and really starting to understand very well what they need and what they're asking for and how much time they need. So we wanted to lay that out clearly for folks. Yeah, so kind of managing expectations that if you show up with everybody signed off within the two-week window, okay. But if you don't have it done yet, it's not going to happen.
Thank you. The only other thing I'm thinking is, you know, events open to the public. Somebody may say, well, I didn't expect more than a hundred people to show up, but they did. So, I mean, I would think that just about anything open to the public should be considered as over a hundred people. And unless you tomorrow put some kind of restriction at, when you hit ninety-nine, that's it. If you, you close the doors and don't let anybody else in, I otherwise, anything that's open to the public, there's really no way of knowing what the capacity is going to be, so.
But Mike, it could be a multi-day event. If it's a multi-day event.
Well, then I would definitely expect to have over a hundred people if it's a multi-day event, but even on a single-day event. Um, you know, you you throw a a beer tasting out in the parking lot, how many people are going to show up? No, if it's a sunny, nice, warm day, you're going to get a lot of people. You get a rainy day under a tent, you may be sitting there by yourself, you know, but who knows?
With a lot of beer.
Yeah.
They start against phone calls. But that's just my opinion. You know, when you still open things up to the public, you have no control or no way of knowing how many people are going to show up.
So.
So if you try to apply under the less than a hundred, and the next thing you have four hundred and fifty people there.
And and everybody's going to apply.
The consequence.
Yeah, that's what I say, yeah.
The consequence that goes from.
So all the restrictions.
Times per year to two times.
Okay, so all the requirements are all the same. There's no less of a requirement other than if you you throw your first one and you had two hundred people show up, you only get one more per year, that's it.
I mean, if they're going to have um, open to the public, not a private event, and they're going to serve alcohol for this. People for the permission.
Right. I, and there was just something that, something that could have a lot of fluctuation on attendance, um.
So there's the option of um going back to four times. That's how we, that's the original version. Um, you know, and not doing the, you know.
But my, my problem is enforcement of all this. I mean, no matter what we.
Well, if if it's a public event, everybody's going to know about it. It has to get signed off by the
Yeah, but I mean.
by the police department and everything else.
If it's less than a hundred people, will you stop them at ninety-nine?
There's no, there's going to be no.
Now, that's what I'm saying is if it's a public event, there's no number cap on it at all.
There is.
I, that's how I look at it, is because you're never going to know how many people. So the only way you will know is if you have a private event, you sell tickets or invite, invite only. That's the only way you'll know.
So if I could jump in, one of the things that I would say is that the regulation reads temporary events for under a hundred, not with an expected attendance of a hundred. And I think there's some flexibility there where if somebody says I'm going to have, uh, I don't, whatever, pick one of these things, I'm going to have a carnival and they want to put up a five thousand square foot tent, but they tell you they're only going to have twenty-five people, but when the fire marshal does his review, he posts the building. But when the fire marshal does his review, he posts the building. At five hundred. To me, the staff could say, this is an event for more than a hundred people. So it doesn't say with a planned attendance for, so I, I think there's a little bit of flexibility in how we.
Does the applicant have to list a number on the application as to how many people plan to have attend?
Well, if these requirements, you would have to say what you were.
I applied for eighty and two hundred showups, you know, that, that's why I'm kinda thinking is, it's open to the public, it's, it's automatic, you know. Over a hundred. If you don't get the turnout, that just means you didn't put on good enough of that.
Wow.
I think that that helps with the places where. Cause you're, I think your, your instincts are coming from a, a rub between adjacent properties, and I think that gets, that solves that problem, but I think it creates. A potential limitation on like a commercial property, or if you had a, I don't know, trying to think of good examples of events. Unlike a more of a commercial property, they wanted to have um.
Another trolley museum, health events.
Right, so for example, a place like that, with a hundred people, they'd be limited to per year. And so, that, I feel like, even if they wanted, sometimes have uh every other weekend flea market or tag sales. Or a car show, so I think we might have had down here.
Side of farmer's market.
Right, so that would be two. And that's.
Well, that's why maybe these numbers aren't the right way to go, it's basically, I mean, if you have a seasonal planned event. Versus a. Single event.
I was also thinking about, and I know this happens in summers, I don't know if it happens in East Windsor. There are churches that do a monthly dinner, and anybody from the community can go. So it's basically. Over a year. You, I mean, you buy tickets in advance.
Yeah.
But it's fifteen dollars for dinner, and there's X number of seats and X amount of food. It's a church event limited to six per year.
Is there, is there an exemption for town activities?
Yeah.
Well, I'm saying, we need to write, you know, so that would, that would eliminate the concert and the park series.
It says take. Property shall. Buy directly with.
Okay, so it, it takes care.
So, but to me, if it says this only, the purpose is for private property, you wouldn't have to come through if it wasn't private property.
That loophole?
Meaning, I don't follow, if it's public, it would be the town, so everything else.
The purpose is to obtain approval for a temporary event for use on private property. I read that, that if it's on public property, this doesn't apply.
Right, you wouldn't come in to get an approval to have a, a town park.
Yeah.
Right, which is what it says.
Which is.
Right.
Yeah, we're.
If we were, if we're discussing seasonal events. Put a seasonal event as a special use permit? So that way they come. Either before us or before someone and say, okay, I plan to do. A farmer's market for the next six Sundays throughout the months of, you know, July and August or whatever. Cause I mean, I, I would love to promote something farming in the town, and if they wanted to hold something like that, I'm all for it, just. That, to me, is still a planned event, but it's gonna be over multiple weeks versus over multiple days.
I think one of the things we talked about when this originally came up way, 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 way back is that the other. More complicated piece of that. You get all the restrictions on the front end if it comes by a special permit, because you can in, impose all those conditions. But a special permit is a, is a bona fide approval that runs with the land. If it's an issue, if it's issued as a temporary, now, you can make the argument that if they specify the specific dates on the calendar. But a, a special permit does not expire, and so you have a.
That would mean that every year you can hold a farmer's.
I, I'm not saying that, but, but. I don't know that we wanna argue.
Yeah, like that, if you're gonna serve them while. They got their original site. The administrative.
Gotcha.
So you're issuing an approval via a special permit for, to conduct a land use. And unless they, you can demonstrate that they've been in violation of the conditions, they come back next year.
Special permit is not the right terminology, but just some other line item in here saying for, maybe for, you know. It seems to me, I don't even wanna restrict it just to agricultural or. I don't know how to, it's, it's, it's tough.
It seems to me that we as a, as a commission are having all kinds of problems with all kinds of. Words and days and times. It seems to me. The existing one, we didn't, we, we worked fine. What, what's wrong with the, other, other than it makes it easier for staff? With the new, if we adopt the new, what's wrong with, what's wrong with what we have? Other than. It's, it's tough on staff.
Well, I, I can see her need for putting in that two-week requirement that you can't walk in the door and say, I need a permit for tomorrow.
Alright.
So that's, that's, so that's a right away modification to our regs, so even if we wanna add that one line in, we have to do this process.
Yes.
So that's, that's why we're having this discussion to see what's good, what's bad, what, don't you like, you know.
Yeah, I, I understand that, it's, it seems to me that. We're making a mountain out of a wall here, you could just add a few. Things which would make it easier and more expedient and more efficient for staff, and leave what we have than rather putting in days and times. You know, auction. But the staff handle that.
Well, that's what you're saying, Frank, a lot of times somebody comes in, they're like, you know, I wanna have an event. And but, oh, yes, the fire marshal, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, it's two weeks, and like, oh, I, I wanna have the event this Friday, but you can't.
And what we're trying to also do is so it's not seem like it's arbitrary, that you're leaving the decision up to one person. That we're putting in some criteria, you have to meet this regardless of who you are, what you wanna do. That not just so somebody's think, well, you know, I like you, so I'll give you your permit, and I don't like you, I won't give you yours.
Staff doesn't do that.
I just don't wanna, that's the whole reason to take any personal decisions out of it, there, there's regs and you meet the regs.
That's it.
That's it. Not just kind of a.
Well, you know, there's an old saying, the more things you, you know, you list you can't do, the harder the problem becomes. Rather than making a general statement, the more you list, the bigger the problem. And I found that to be too, in my profession especially.
Well, that's my opinion.
Anybody else got it? So, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak?
Other people would, but I'll start, uh, my name is Gail Wauber, I have a written statement that I typed up that I'd like to read. I do have copies, did you want me to hand them out now or after?
Pick your copy, sure. And, and where do you reside? Yeah, where, where do you reside?
Uh, one one seven Scantic Road. Thank you. The one question I have before I wanted um to clarify before I start. In the beginning of this, did you say it's indoor and outdoor? So that is a correction, yes, okay. So I did make a comment in here, and it specifically related to outdoor, so, but I'll read it anyway, so, so you'll know. Uh, my name is Gail Wauber, my husband Lester and I have lived at one one seven Scantic Road since nineteen seventy-six. First, let me say that I applaud the planning and zoning office for their attempt to improve current zoning regulations. However, I have very strong concerns. That I want to point out with the proposed changes to the temporary event permit regulations. Here are some specific issues I'd like to point out, but not all of them, I think other people might bring up some additional. A permit can be obtained regardless of how the property is zoned. This conflicts with the P O C D, which was supposed to be a guide for zoning. So it doesn't matter what the zoning is, I can have these events, no matter what my zone. A person could actually run a total of eight outside events, and this is what I just spoke to. On their land throughout the year, based on New England weather, there could realistically be events happening May through October on a regular basis. Where are the rules and guidelines in place to control impact to neighbors with regards to noise? Hours the event can operate. Sanitation requirements, traffic safety and control. And general safety and impact on neighbors, and here's just a couple of examples to ponder. If I own a horse farm and someone applies for a permit for a carnival or large gathering on the property next door. I know I don't own a horse farm, but I know people that do, and there's no way they want any noise like that next to their barns. Is that gonna come up in a meeting and an approval process? Placement of outdoor facilities, bathrooms, parking, tents, et cetera. To ensure that they are not right next to a residential house or yard. Is that something that this whole approval process is gonna monitor? Approval is required by the different departments in town. But what rules and guidelines will they use to guide their decision to approve or deny a temporary permit? Did they already have those on the books, or is it just? Hey, I'm thinking, I'm looking at the permit, I'm looking at the property, it looks okay to me, or is there specific rules and guidelines they go by? What does the signature of the Z E O mean? What rules and guidelines will be used to determine whether or not to sign? Is it just whether or not the application is filled out, a fee is paid, and other departments have weighed in? Or does it have some connection to actual zoning regulations? Under four oh five D, it states that the Z E O has the discretion to require P Z. P Z C approval, what are the rules around whether or not to ask for the approval, just a gut feeling? Are there any rules that are gonna be um used to go by that? Under four oh five D, two, three, four, and five. It directs applicants to apply directly to the different town departments. Does that mean that those departments have their own application forms and process? So that four oh five A, B, and C would not apply? Notice to neighbors that a permit request has been submitted is not required. At all, neighbors have no chance to voice their concerns like the horse farmer. On a permit request, a resident could wake up one morning and find out a three-day carnival is now planned on land next to them. The regulations have stipulations for events under one hundred people or over one hundred people, and I think. You kind of alluded to this, who will be policing the size of the crowd attending the event? Unless it is by invitation only, you have no way to control the number of people attending. Fundraisers, temporary retail sales, community events, and other activities mentioned. Also, is one hundred people for the entire course of the event or at one time? It is not completely clear if you need one permit for each event, or you can get one permit that would cover six small events. And this last bullet is a really big concern of mine. Of significance concern is this regulation is not clear. If the permits are tied to the land or to a specific person. For example, if I have a field. And I rent it out to an event promoter planner. Then who gets the permit? And if it is tied to the promoter, then they can potentially have eight events. Then can I rent out that same field to another promoter planner, and they can also have eight events? There's no language that clarifies that the permit is tied to the land or actually to a person. So in conclusion, the way these regulations are written, there are too, too much gray area, which opens it up for individuals to abuse it. It is not appropriate to allow eight commercial type events a year, or potentially more, depending on that last bullet. On private property that is not classified as commercial, it goes against the very reason we have zoning laws. So, thank you very much for listening.
Anyone else I would like to speak?
I, I just, one comment, they took. I thought that was great.
Hey, Don Rich, B Van, one twenty-one Scantic Road. Who's Danielle?
She's the assistant town manager.
Okay, she's supposed to be. Uh, holding somebody for the applicant signer, who is she?
She's the assistant town planner and the zoning enforcement officer, she works in the planning and development department. She drafted the.
So she came up with the fifty-eight dollars out of her own pocket?
To the state, yeah, that'll go to the state.
This is state?
Yeah, it comes out of the budget, by her own pocket, it comes out of the planning and development budget.
She, so she came up with these ideas of this? That we're going through.
She works on the planning department.
Yeah, but she came up with all this planning of the events and all that, what I'm saying. Who ca, who came up with the plans of the events?
We already had some in place. That were scattered and not clear, and so we're trying to make improvements to our zoning regulations. And she took that on and drafted.
Out of all, nobody told her to do it?
We've been working on it at this commission, coming in with, you know. Spreadsheets showing where all these different issues are in the regulations. And we came forward for the, the application form to the commission recently. Um, showing how we were trying to make improvements in the process, and this was just a natural next step. To get it into the regulation so that folks who are planning temporary events would know what the expectation is.
If you're implying that this was just her brain idea.
That's, no, I don't, I don't know, I'm asking.
Oh, that, that seems to be what I, what I'm getting, that's the implication. No, it was just not her idea, the commission as a, a planning and zoning commission, the town planner, we've all been involved in this.
Okay.
One way or the other, it's just not a throw in your face thing, and let's go.
Yeah, okay, no, I'm just curious. Because it seems like, right after we had this fight of a whole year of the property behind us. This comes up, so that property is gonna definitely be used for this. That's what I'm saying. So I think, from what I heard from somebody, the applicant of the first time. I heard. It's not over yet, he's not done.
He wasn't related to any.
Well, I'm just saying what I heard, so, this is what I'm saying. So I know they're not happy. But at least show some respect to us, you know.
You're concerned with the last, yeah, the scout hall deal.
Yeah, no, yeah, the, the event behind us, right, the property. So they're upset, I know that, cause they gotta get the money back for the property somehow, you know. So.
Yeah, that's your opinion.
Oh, yeah, everybody has an opinion, yeah, no. I'm just putting that out there.
If anything, we're trying to tighten the regulations, though, we're not trying to boost them.
I know, but now it says.
It's not the drafts.
No, I understand, but it says the events and all this. You know, we're not gonna be home, it's all starts over to where I gotta worry about. Like you said, people over there, the stranger drinking this, that, it's, you know. It's just relates to what we went through, and we paid a lot of money, you know, to fight that.
And again, this is not slightly specific, this is a whole power.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, but I'm looking for.
Yeah.
My backyard.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying, I appreciate it, thank you.
But the beer thing's semi-good, uh, Abbott Schultz, Nine Cemetery Road, uh, East Windsor.
Uh, thank you for all your hard work on this. I really do appreciate what you're trying to do and clarify, and I do understand what you're trying to do. The timing seemed a little crazy to us, so we're a little sensitive, as you might imagine. And I thought you had some great comments there. Let's not make it worse, make it easier. I thought the best thing when it's got rid of the regulation on the garage sale. Who knew you needed a permit for a garage sale? Right. So I I thank you for the hard work. And you, someone mentioned about the number of the staff. And the number of events last year, how much it is to the staff. How many were there last year that somebody had to do all that work? Were it hundreds or was it twenty eight?
About the recurrence of people walking through the door. Hoping to have an event the next day.
So to you, you put a date either thirty days or two weeks or whatever, that would solve that problem. Okay. Thank you very much. Enjoyed it.
Hello. Thank you for taking your time to listen today. Angela Bevan, one twenty one Scantic Road. Um, I just, I I guess my husband's point was, um. Danielle is representing this application for the applicant, but who is the applicant? But there is a signature. It doesn't say town of East Windsor, and we're trying to figure out who is that person that signed this application on May twelfth.
Danielle is the assistant town planner. She signed it.
She worked for the town.
Okay, but that's her name down here. That's her signature, saying applicant signature. Okay, that's what you were trying to find out. You know, it just can't be the town of East Windsor. Okay, so anyways, we're kind of totally opposed to this new text amendment for the temporary event. Um, which was to be replaced into entirely. Um, after reading the purpose to obtain this approval, it seems to me. It could be a second attempt to disguise in finding a way to pursue to use the adjacent property uh to Scantic and Cemetery Road. We're just really concerned about maybe deja vu, everything happening again, seeing that we won. And we worked so hard to win, and we spent so much money, Gail and my husband and us. To win this case that we just don't want something like this to come in and affect our properties. It's it's like we're not really going to have much to say. Um, I know the zoning board did a wonderful job in the past situation, and we thank you so much wholeheartedly. But again, we believe by passing this petition, it will wipe out everything that we worked so hard for previously. Because I think this might kind of like. Affect us because we have a lot of property behind us, and they could do anything they want with it. And and uh. Like we said, we. If we fought and we're not to have. We fought not to have uncontrolled things of this nature happen all over again. Basically, that's what I'm saying. And my question is, is what does this specifically mean to us, our neighbors? Whereby them passing this or looking into this anyways, I I don't really understand. Maybe you can clarify that for us or something. Um. And um. And we were wondering, why is this something like this that we fought so hard for and won for is happening? It doesn't seem to be possible. This is why we're asking you, the zoning board, to reject and deny this petition request. Because we don't want it at all. We don't want something happening like this in our backyards. And we just ask you, the zoning board, each and every one of you, to please see this as another attempt. By the applicant or whoever, I don't know, is trying to win their way uh from us. Previously failing. For our win. For the Scantic and the uh event facility. And um it just uh. In obtaining this approval and using the property for the temporary events, I just don't think it's it's. Good for us. I don't think it's it's something to consider. So we cannot thank you guys enough for listening to us. But I just feel like it's deja vu. It's happening all over again. And 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 again, like I said, if you could just clarify, what does this specifically mean for us, the neighbors again, this?
Whenever you have a text amendment, you have to have somebody apply.
Right.
And the town of East Windsor. We as a town are considering some changes. So Danielle, who is the assistant town planner. She's the applicant. She had nothing in the back of her mind.
Right.
About doing anything.
But I just want her to open.
She has so. I I want to make it clear that she is.
Of course.
She's completely innocent. She has nothing.
Yeah.
No alternative motive in her mind. And secondly. You know. I I understand your frustration, and you and you know how we decided on your.
Absolutely. Yeah, we appreciate it. Yep.
And, you know. We're we're not naive. We know.
Of course.
We know it's. Many of us know, maybe more so than to me because I'm a hell of a lot older there. We we know what's going on.
Of course.
And and we cannot write regulations specifically to. To protect you.
Right.
We have to write our regulations for the whole town.
Exactly.
But we're well aware of what's.
Right, so that, yeah.
So every issue you brought up.
Right.
At least I thought of.
Okay, wonderful. I appreciate that. And I know you guys are fair and, you know, think, but I just want you to see what we're seeing it from our side.
Yes.
So, you know, and and like I said, we we fought. Furiously to to win, and we did, and we thank you guys for that. And and it wasn't easy, and and we have, like, most of the town. They they believed in us, and they felt the same way, too, and that's why. And it's just, I'm seeing this as. Like I said, I not good in our favor, you know. It may be good for other things, but for property owners like us. And especially people who have a lot of land behind us and stuff, it just wouldn't be right. It's like it's starting all over again. So I just hope you consider it, and when you do write it over again, or if you do, you know, just keep us in mind. And I know you'll be fair about it. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time. But I I, like I said, I'm just, I don't want to have a bunch of another sleepless nights over this. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I did have one question I just want. In the last bullet I had. Where I mentioned about whether it's tied to, like, you have an event promoter. Do you have an answer to that, how that would work?
Every application that comes into our office is tied to the property owner.
So, okay, so when I spoke to Danielle, I asked her specifically, and. Yes, I had sent her too many asks and emails because she said, just come to the meeting. And that was a big concern. Because if you have a piece of property. It's it's. It's not great that somebody can have eight events there. But it's a lot different if they can have that same property, get another promoter, and can just continually. Ongoing and ongoing, and you're saying that's not true.
No, it's tied to the property.
Good.
I'll ask, is there anyone online that would like to comment on this application? Okay, so. I think we've got a couple of things that we need to uh. Look at and uh reconsider as to how we're going to word it, so make some edits and corrections, so. I uh would recommend that we. Have a motion to continue the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on application P Z twenty twenty three dash eighteen. Till our next regular meeting, which is July eleventh.
There's a motion to continue the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, right, Dave. Any other pro discussions?
In discussion, I'm, I guess I heard. Or interpreted the comments to be. Increasing the number of allowable events per year for property. Um, might be something we want to revisit in this draft. Um. Because right now you're allowed to do it two times a year. And it sounded like the public comment. Was concerned over increasing that.
Yeah, I'll I'll kind of add in discretion that I mean. I don't really see a lot of restriction in the existing. Uh, regulation, so. Anything that we would amend would make it more restricted and less respected.
The only thing that I'm saying was an increase in my mind was the. Number of events per year.
Yeah. Currently, currently, there's no number at all.
Oh.
No, I'm just that draft.
No, I'm correct.
There's nothing.
Yeah.
That's why we're going through this.
It says auctioning.
That's been taken.
If you committed in any zone up to two times per year.
That says times, though it's not days.
That's present, present.
Oh.
So if you have a carnival that's every weekend.
I see.
Is that two times or is it one?
Okay, it's not clear. Yep.
That's that's kind of the need for clarification.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, any other further discussion? Hearing no, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Continuing this to our next meeting. I'm sorry, I picked up your name with some vote. We have no old business. We are removing the new business that's not going to be presented in the season. No other business. So we have. Correspondence. G B I T submission of technical information concerning a proposal to construct a wireless telecommunication facility at fifty Plantation Road in East.
Yeah, that is notification for a dossier before the siding council is to add a new generic uh diesel generator. Within um the fenced area. The power located at fifteen Plantation.
Is there currently a generator there?
It says install, but typically there is.
Yeah, so local power, no generator.
So they're just replacing.
Yeah.
What they have with some other generator.
So during emergency situations, we can talk.
That's really no, nothing more than just notifying us, more action on our part. Information. We can't do anything.
There were a couple of Prague um. Letters that are just a pretty information. There's cannabis, parking.
Grant B, I prefer.
So, um, I did receive a letter from the siding council. They've set a date for the thirty one raw road petition. For the solar array. Um, in the letter, uh, scan it and get it out to you. It talks about how you could attend the listening session. At two o'clock, and it's July seventh, September, September seventh. Um. But then you have to sign up if you wish to speak. So and then that one is at six thirty P M that same day, September seventh.
That's the one they're complaining about the noise. That the one we're talking about?
No, this is a new proposal at thirty one raw road. And we we um did comment on it and sent in the position paper that the commission came up with. Um. And a few others in town actually did the same, so.
Is there already somebody who's going to speak on behalf of the town?
There is, uh, the house has.
Sign up. Again, just to make sure that our position is.
So and they they could come and receive ours. We got confirmation from the executive director that we should provide for them.
Kenny? We have nothing for our business meeting.
I have copies of the plan of conservation and development. For everyone, and then an O L R report that talks about goals and responsibilities for the mission. And I'd like to next uh read the agenda. Kind of go through the process, set up a timeframe and how we'll approach the review.
Thank you, guys. Of course.
Have a good night. So in the front jacket is the um. Yeah, I figure you could scribble all over this one as we're going through your revision process.
Excellent.
So this is a really good report in the front packet that talks about your role. And how we might approach it.
Very interesting.
Right, all the appendices are in there.
A lot of work. Wow. You didn't.
He's a block.
You're the block.
Can stick there.
And.
No, he's bad. Um, yeah. You?
No, we're throwing the word.
Oh, we probably. You know who's good at that? Alan Baker.
That's it for our agenda. I'll uh entertain the motion to adjourn.
I make the motion that we adjourn.
We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, right, Dave. Any discussion? Hearing no, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
unanimous, we are adjourned at eight fifteen.